We're here today at Bank of Dudley to discuss business loans. So many businesses and industries trust the Bank of Dudley for a variety of financing alternatives to suit your specific needs. From short-term loans to help with cash flow, loans to purchase equipment or facilities. At Bank of Dudley, we have commercial mortgage loans, capital improvement loans for construction or renovation. We can help with your business vehicle loans, or for a small business line of credit. In other words, Bank of Dudley has your business covered. No matter what it is, you can trust the lenders at the Bank of Dudley with five convenient locations: East Dublin, Downtown Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, Dudley, and Jeffersonville. The Bank of Dudley, Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
I'd like to call Dublin City Council Meeting, Lord, if you would, let's please stand as our last councilman, Benny Jones, if he'd give us the invocation and pledge and flag.
It's fire has. There in the fall, Lord, we just think of this opportunity to meet, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to continue to bless this council, to get them knit us together, Lord, in unity, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to crown our head with wisdom, Lord, to understand, Lord, we make decisions, Lord. Ask you to bless them when it came out tonight, Lord, to get them safe travels home. We get other blessings, we ask you in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thever's twin in justice for all. I'd like to thank you everyone for coming tonight. I think we've got two or three, or maybe even more, special presentations to make prior to our regular agenda items, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones to kick that off.
Okay, we first, Mr., you gonna step down there? You want me to hand them to you, and I can get them all unboxed?
There you go. I can't read.
All right. First of all, we've got a presentation of a 10-year service pin, Mr. Brian Evans. There he comes. Tell where Brian works, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. All right, we've got three 30-year pins, and the first one is Mr. Stacy Sat.
Thank you, Stacy.
The next one is 30 years again, Ms. Aretha Brown. Last but not least, Mr. Greg Dunham. Okay, then next, we have a retirement presentation from Mr. Willie Lee Richardson. And let me just read a little biography, and it's, Mr. Willie Lee Richardson started with the city of Dublin on 9/25/1974. So y'all think about that, that where were you on, in September of 1974? He was 19-years-old as an operator in the wastewater treatment plant. Michael Clay always says that Willie built the plant, and then he couldn't bear to let it go, so he stayed and worked on it. Mr. Richardson became the supervisor on 7/1/1985. After much hard work, he was promoted to superintendent on 6/29/2007. He's retiring after 43 years of employment with the city of Dublin, and he's enjoying time with his family now. Let me just say, I think the first time I met Willie, I was a city attorney, and we were down there with the river keepers who were after us and wanted to sue us and get after us, and I think the words for Willie are calm and cool and collected. He was, they were making me nervous, but he was just calm and talking to them and showing them how he did everything, and after he showed them, they left and didn't come back. So. He is, even with really bad news, if he calls you from down there, he's always very calm, and you just feel like, well, he's got bad news, but we're gonna be able to figure it out. So Willie just, thank you so much.
Thank you. Willie, I just found out you and I the same age. You ain't old enough to retire.
Buyers selling your residential or commercial property starts with one, C-21 Durden Corningay Realty, located at 1700 Veterans Boulevard in Dublin, and available anytime by calling 272-1535, or logging on to c21dublin.com. Integrity, honesty, accountability, there's only one, C-21 Durden Corningay Realty Broker, George Durden.
Okay, item number one is approval of the September 6, 2018 city council meeting minutes, and you have a copy of those. Do we hear a motion to accept?
I made the motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, and a second by Mr. Johnson that we approved the minutes. Any discussion there? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over $3,000.
Make some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs, and a second by Mr. Brown that we approved the bills. Any discussion there? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number three is approval of purchases over $3,000.
We have one purchase, Mr. Mayor, we have some, it's basically phone equipment, and Mr. Robert Jefferson, I keep wanting to call you Mr. Robertson now, Robert Jefferson is here to answer any questions you have about it, but it's mostly spare phones and phone equipment that we'll use during the year. We budgeted $10,000 in this purchase, and we still might have to buy some more, but is for $7,308.94.
Okay, you've heard staff's recommendation to hear a motion to approve the purchase.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Johnson that we approved the purchase. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number four is presentation by Mr. Jeff Kurtz of Grant Specialist of Georgia, Inc., giving a housing CDBG update. Jeff, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, thank you for giving me a chance to come up and update you today, and for all the work you guys have put in, and Deborah, they worked on a little PowerPoint to give some information, some visuals for you. Like to say that I believe it's up and going, and it's been a big success so far, as in anything, once you get out there, start the ball rolling, it takes a little bit, and it's to start snowballing, there's some good success, and so we're seeing that. First slide, you see that the award was given there in this grant, there was 13 units slated for rehab, one for reconstruction, three for acquisition and clearance, and the numbers that has benefited. Where we stand right now is we've completed two houses. The first one we completed was Mr. James Holder on 121 Pritchett. That was the approximate amount money spent, there's generally change orders and things that go on. As we entered the house and tried to look and see how best or wisely to use the money that was submitted in the fund originally for the grant, so we did an evaluation inspection on the house, came up with a game plan with the help of Mr. Holder, and we were able to do some major renovations with windows, doors, floors, some bathroom. One changed that, there was not any handicap accessibility done. We generally, if we replace tubs and shower units, we give sometimes the owners a chance to pick out a shower or tub unit, and Mr. Holder picked out the tub unit. But there was extensive damage to the flooring in there due to some water termite damage. This particular unit was rehabbed by Alan Craft of Heritage Homes, and Mr. Holder's here this evening, was wondering if you want to say a word?
How you doing, Mr. Holder?
Good evening, thank you.
Glad to see you.
Yes, like he said, they remodeled my house on 121 Pritchett Street. I know that had some floor damage and all, but I didn't realize the extent it was, and it was a lot of rotting and termite damage. But they came in and remodeled it for me, did a real good job, I'm real happy with it. It made my living condition much better, and I think they're doing a real good job.
Thank you, Mr. Holder.
I'm Marcus Clements with Clements &amp; King Insurance. Derek and I have 75 years of combined experience serving this community. Our agency is dedicated totally to the sale of life and health insurance for Lawrence and surrounding counties. Call us for any question you have on life and health insurance.
You put your mower through a lot. All that back and forth and all those acres can add up to thousands of miles. That's like mowing cross-country. It's a lot to ask of a mower. Gravely Commercial Mowers are built for all-day performance, helping you get the job done season after season, and ergonomically designed to keep you comfortable mile after mile. Gravely, built to mow the distance. Available exclusively at independent Gravely dealers.
Visit the new location of Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson Street in Dublin.
At the same time, basically right after we started his, we started one over on Robert's Street, owned by Regina Dudley. On that one, you see the base amount that was spent in there. We got into that house also, we found some termite damage, water damage in the bathroom. One of the key things that we did for her was get the roof off. There was some oncoming damage there. I think it was new central heating and air unit put in there. As we got into her bathroom, we found where some previous work had been done with the water heater wasn't done properly, and so we were able to get in that, updated her kitchen. Hesitate to use the word updated, that's not our intent, as a lady in Vienna once asked, is this like the movie The Bus Show? It's not. If we can beautify and update it in the process, we'd love to do that. We always take into consideration the homeowner's situation. We know when we leave, they've got many years they've gotta live with it, and so we do try to accommodate their wishes. Of course, they get to pick out colors or patterns, designs, and things like that to go in. In this case, we were able to redesign her kitchen with some corner cabinets, and I actually make it look like a kitchen before long. So that was the last thing. There was new windows installed, there was some rotten wood termite damage around the windows, and again, we talked about floor damage in there. Just to know, in some of these cases, as we get in, we do have a first work order that goes in with the grant. As we do a re-inspection, sometimes, as you know, it was almost a year and a half since we submitted a grant and we were able to come out through the works, and that period of time, some things changed. In this particular grant, we're still, I say locked in, but we try to stick to the budget. Every dollar we put in somebody else's house takes from the next person, and so we try to allocate, or use that money, it's allocated to a house the best way. So in this case, I'm not gonna give you too much information, just let me know. But in this case, we had intended to work on and interchange some doors for her. It's a family home that she wanted to keep the doors, and so the contractor was able to adjust, repair the doors, make them functional, which was important to us, and we were able to move that money into some of the other more important things with floor damage. So we were able to stay within budget. So sometimes, working with the homeowner, and I think we did the same thing with Mr. James, we look at making things decent, safe, and sanitary, making them structurally fine, suitable for long-term use. And so she was actually gonna be here tonight, I talked to her earlier, she has some teeth pulled, and so she didn't feel like coming, so she apologized for that. The contractor on this one was Ashley Rogers, people, I have a few people out of Hawkinsville. I'd like to mention that, we'll talk about it in a minute, we are always looking for contractors, always talking, called a couple people last week, so anybody that you guys know, anybody public, we're always welcome. There are some criterias we can go over, but we're always looking for more people. We do have another grant coming up, and we're gonna submit another chip grant, and so we wanna keep this rolling as much as possible, I believe, with local.
But they have to be certified in some sense.
Yes, certified license, and then we check the insurances, we check the credentials, try to follow up, even look at some of their work, talk to people, find all the good and the bad, we check their, where they're buying the materials from, see if they're paying their bill, because we don't put any money upfront. We pay at the 50, 80, and 100% mark. So really, they've gotta sustain and put up that first little bit themselves. The, I will say, at this point, y'all have, with Deborah's help, and have been very good working with the program to keep the contractors funded, and we all know that state bail money doesn't come quickly, and y'all have reacted and made it a very good workable situation for contractors, as far as sketchwork goes. But we do evaluate all the contractors, look at it, talk to them, take baby steps, let them see a property sometimes that we already rehabbed, we go over and work right up so they understand, and then usually it's a bidding process where they have to come and then our budget.
Let me ask you a question, like Mr. Holder, how long did it take to complete a house like that? You spent $30,000, how long did it take to finish it?
Every house is different. We look at the dollars amount and the extent of the work, generally 45 to 60 days. I think on yours, on his, we had 60 days. It gives time, especially this damn time, if everybody's in construction, you're waiting on every set of material from molding to paneling, which we had special orders and special paneling to match, which I looked fantastic, y'all. If you get a chance to see Mr. Holder's house, it'll go through, it's really impressive. But usually 60 days. That gives a contractor enough time to do it sufficiently without too much inconvenience to the homeowner, and then also, we know all the contractors are gonna have those things going on. We do gotta encourage that. We don't pay top dollar. A lot of what they do is not ministry work, and I even said, we don't expect you to be so cheap that you can't make money. We want you to make money, we want you to come back. But this isn't the type of thing where they could get 12 houses a year. So they generally have other work, but this gives them a chance to work on, so usually 60 days is the amount. Page three talks about two houses in the middle of, we're actually in the middle of Charles Holder's house, should be completed next week. Had a little bit more work involved than that, that dollar amount is the amount that I think, 50% mark, and that, we've done roof, windows, floors, doors in that one, updating the kitchen. A lot of times, as we go into the homes, if the kitchen cabinets, say, are not totally destroyed, and they can't be reworked and refinished, as we did in Charles' house and James' house, it saves some money to roll in other projects, and so, hold it that tight in those two houses. Updating in the bathrooms, there's a lot of rotten wood and termite damage in these also, and also the hard work of sealing in the back, we found out. So some of this is going on, we just go by what we can see. We would never expect contractor to bail what can't be seen. So realistically, with our experience and knowledge of what we've seen and looking at, and their bidding, we go in, but we always accommodate where you're working with building inspection. Is Alan still in here? Alan's been great, really, all of y'all have, but he's been great following behind us and working with us. We always try to keep a good relationship with building inspection. He didn't pay you.
Hi, I'm Chuck Harwell, President and CEO of the Community Bank of Dublin-Lawrence County. I would like to personally invite you to come in and open an account with us. Our service and lending professionals know what it takes to make life easy and convenient, and will help you get set up with our mobile and online banking right away. We founded Community Bank on common sense banking and a dedication to help people just like you with your personal or business accounts. We want to assist you in securing loans for your automobile, home, land, or whatever financial goals you may have in life. We founded Community Bank on common sense banking and a dedication to help people just like you with your personal or business accounts. Visit us at Community Bank of Dublin-Lawrence County, and come in and see why common sense banking never goes out of style.
Who paid the difference? Who paid the difference when y'all said that y'all expected the cost to be $15,000, but it's $30,000? Who paid the difference in the cost?
Well, we don't hit that. For instance, I don't have all the numbers with me, but like on James' house, James Holder's house, when we did the inspection through the grant process, originally through the application process, we might have inspected it, and we looked, and I think that number was correct, if we can go back to the one or the other slide, okay. I think that 18968 was within our original cost estimate. All that money is coming from the grant, except for the owner's portion, which is always based on their income. Again, if I give too much information, let me know. But we determine that in the grant application process by what they tell us. Once we get the grant, we have to verify that with whatever information, income, with whether social security or job, and so that portion is based on their income, it's all state guidelines that we follow, and so the owner's portion would come in and work in conjunction with the grant portion. So we would never, really ever had that discrepancy of that part of the number. Once the homeowner pays their portion, and this is just on CDBG, once they pay their portion, we sign the contracts, and we start, everything else is funded by the grant, even change order money. It's not, it's not unrare, and you can imagine, if you've been getting in a house, and we're doing work in the kitchen and bathrooms, there's no waste damage, there's no damage. So we do work with contractors on a change order basis, and in fact, with Mr. James' house, when Alan got in there and started working, found some damage, contacted me, sent me some photos, I was over here within a couple days, and the meantime, we contacted Alan, Alan made the trip out, and determined this was the appropriate way to do it, and then it was repaired, re-inspected, and of course, flooring was put down. And we're, of course, covering all that here, and everything is approved. If we don't approve some of the nice city things, you know, if we're painting, and there's not damage to a wall, that's not approved, this is not meant to beautify in sense, and we're just looking at the damages and how to make it decent, safe, and sanitary. Flipping back over to that house number three and four, we're just finishing up, in fact, Charles was gonna be here tonight, he said he probably wouldn't make it because we're putting in the countertops tonight, and then some final touch of work in his house shooting done next week. 310 Robert Street is a rental unit owned by Louis Curry and his holding company. This unit should be completed next week, it did contain a lot of lead, so there was a metal basement contractor came in from Macon, and we use on other projects. He actually did, took over the whole project, make it simpler, but for the clean, turn the job. He should be completed next week, so we weren't able to give full complete finished picture on this, but I was over there the other day, nice job. Whenever we do do lead, of course, everything is inspected with, building inspection anyway, any kind of lead project, special criteria which are in place to make it less safe for what we call for 20 years. Generally involves either just removing all the lead base paint, or covering it, abating it, making it safer for 20 years. Anytime we do that, EPD does come down on a scheduled visit and inspect the work and the procedures, and then it's followed up with what we call clearance report, to make sure there's no lead dust, and everything is contained and safe for occupancy back in. Courageant thing here, even when I was inspecting it, people were dropping by and saying, hey, is this gonna be rented, you know, fixed up and rented? Since then, people constantly coming by, as the work's been done, saying, we wanna talk to Mr. Curry about getting in. But this one, again, should be completed within budget by next week.
Jeff also mentioned that if it's a rental property, they have to pay half.
Yes, on a rental property, there are certain guidelines, procedures, which we won't get into, but it's always gone into with the understanding that the grant pays half and the owner pays half. Then they have special criteria and guidelines that they have to follow for renting to a low-income person, and that's all state published, and it changes from year to year, also based on the counties and everything, population. Cheer is more of that. But, so whoever moves into this house will be a low-income person, and the rate will be held at a lower rate than just a perfect place on your income. But yet, the owners pay half, the grant pays half, split down the middle. Sometimes it can help a project, as far as applying for a grant, sometimes it can hurt. It helps with the leverage, anytime city, county, anybody puts in money, homeowners put in, it helps, but sometimes the numbers can go down, and it's all about the people. So if you're not helping people with those dollars, it doesn't help. In the current grant, there were some owners of some rental properties in the grant that we just got, and they had elected not to be involved in this, and so we are still stuck in a sense with some rental units in there that it really are so-called. But again, hopefully, these should be completed next week, upcoming projects. We've got one, I won't tell names, because I'm not complete yet, but we have one house being bid on right now, and one lady over on Robert Street, and then another lady talked to me today, been trying to figure out how to finish her application, make sure she wants to turn in her income, and all those little details that are somewhat personal, people are reluctant to give. Talked to her today, and we're gonna try to finalize that next week, so we should have two more units. Going in on that, in that neighborhood over there, there was a person that was not interested in participating, a lot of those people still come on board, which is start finishing things in the neighborhood, and there was one deaf in that neighborhood, so we've gotta contend with that, so it's not, not entirely a possibility with that.
Jeff, the 13 locations or rehabs, are they predetermined, or is it just in a neighborhood and you do it until you've got 13 done, or the money's gone?
Good question. It is all, on the CDBG, it is all predetermined. The state wants us to put everything in writing, down to the T, fine dotted, and even very detailed, which is impossible. All that ends up adding something to the grant, but as you know, some people move, and all those things. So what we do is our best, to our best ability, when we find a location, is we survey everybody, anybody who's interested in participating, they'll go into the grant, as in Mr. Holder's case, and so those all are predetermined, knowing that the scope of the work may change. Both in dollars, what's happened with that house, we've had in there before, to put roof and siding on a house, these are the things. We get out there a year later, and kids have pitched in for the roof and siding on. So within a year, year and a half, two years sometimes, things change. Whenever somebody drops out, what we do try to do is move into the neighborhood with that money. We do try to finish all those that are in the grant, and we make a list of those that are interested in the neighborhood at that point about getting into the grant if we have money left over, and so then we look and evaluate those, and do the same application process, we look at their house, evaluate it, and they have to be the same criteria. That would have to be, again, okay by the state, because it's a big change in that grant, but of course, they're interested, once you guys get the grant, they are interested in spending that money in that area. I was in a neighborhood today, and I was seeing that some of the curbs, the government would be over the curb that was going in, but we see it all the time, I've talked to fellow Americans, they say, how it changed for the neighborhood, fellow Americans once said, I've got a neighborhood, never had a neighborhood, now I've got paved roads, you know, I've got, so what we do with this So what we do with this, it is a neighborhood project in a bigger basis, we try to keep that money in that neighborhood. When we do the chip, which is upcoming grant that y'all have asked us to apply for, that will still be in the neighborhood, but it will be less tied to the streets. It can jump around more and they'll go more flexibility with that. This particular project going in over there, Charles Edman, Carolyn Watson, Greenwood Park, and of course, in the Garner Street. Great area, I've met some great folks over there. We hope to probably next week start handing that application. I hate to put the parke before the horse because the money's not been given yet, the word's not been... But we want to hit the ground running. We just want to encourage Alan. Alan's going to be probably adding on some people to try to pick up some more work and get in this area, but we'd still love to have more contractors. But we don't want to hold this process back. I think what we'll see, which we've seen in other areas, is you've got the first grant, you've got the second grant, you get a third grant, you're really rolling. And where somebody in the first grant might be holding back, wondering if they want to participate, we're going to roll into the second grant, meet some needs. Again, it's all about the people. Again, I think it's a lot of success and word spreading. We've had people call from the county, other areas of the city, and all we tell them is we work within discretion of y'all. Please call you City Councilman, County Commissioner, you know, whoever that be. Last one is, we are still looking for local contractors. I was telling Deborah today, I'm constantly, you can stop the coffee or gas, I'll take a picture of somebody's van, or the number, call them. Miss Bessie, wonderful lady out there, talking every time, but I actually got the name and number for her son, and so we're making contact with him. We're always talking it out. So we'll talk to anybody. This is not for everybody. This is tough work. It's tough physically, emotionally, once you get in, you're working around homeowners and their things. Never goes as planned, as you can imagine. Never seen a rehab or a job like that it does. So it's not for everybody, but we will talk to everybody. If you guys know anybody, please send them online. I'd love them to call that number. If I'm not in, leave a message. I'll make a special effort to do it. One contractor's good, two would be great. If you get ten, it's going to kind of stagnate everything, the bidding process, everybody's going to get kind of tired of bidding and waiting, but all this will grow. So I mean, if we get one or two more contractors involved from the area, we'd be a great job. Want to say again what Deborah and her department has done out there. A lot of talk going on, people are happy, people love to see the curb and the government going in and really making a difference in the whole community.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Council has a very good presentation.
Anybody from...
Any questions from y'all on this end? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Dublin Macon Cardiology, celebrating over fourteen years of serving Dublin in Lawrence County. At Dublin Macon Cardiology, we're always committed to taking care of you and your heart. Bringing state-of-the-art cardiac care closer to home with a walk-in chest pain center. New patients are always welcome and no referral is ever required. Dr. Vega is proud to announce the addition of Elise Roetramel, a nurse practitioner to our staff, dropped by today at Dublin Macon Cardiology, 206A Hospital Drive in Dublin.
Our next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 242 Industrial Boulevard from P Professional Zone to B2 Highway Oriented Business Zone to allow larger signage for physicians' offices. Mr. Jones, you mind reading that?
It's an Ordinance Zoning Map Amendment number eighteen dash ten, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, is previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 242 Industrial Boulevard, Dublin, Georgia, from P Professional to B2 Highway Oriented Business Zone. The proposed rezon is to allow for larger signage for a physician's office.
Yeah, our second reading and public hearing of this proposed rezoning will be at our October fourth meeting. Item number six, a discussion and/or action on an intersection and safety study for the Industrial Walt Dare intersection area.
Okay. Everyone knows the intersection there at Industrial and Walt Dare Road is a dangerous intersection, and we are contracting with Thomson Hutton to do a study there to help us figure out exactly what we need to do. There's a roundabout, that might be the solution. I think a roundabout would work really well there. And that's one of the things they're going to help us determine. So we will be working on that. Thomson Hutton will be working on that, doing the study and telling us exactly what we need to do to calm the traffic out there.
Let's see, we need a motion there to approve the study?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, and I'm sorry, who was the second? Mr. Johnson, to approve the study. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, is discussion and/or action on a contract with Thomson Hutton to perform a drainage study on the Industrial Boulevard area.
This is in the same area. Industrial Boulevard needs a lot of improvements along its length, and we're going to be working on that. But at the end of the road where it comes into eighty, there's a lot of flooding there. We believe there's some problems under eighty. It's a low area to start with. Some businesses were built there without proper, they weren't in the city at the time, but they don't have proper detention, so all the water runs down the hill and goes under a very small pipe under Industrial Boulevard. And staff's recommendation is that we hire Thomson Hutton to do a study on that area and see what we need to do to relieve the flooding there.
Okay. You got a recommendation to perform a study on the Industrial Boulevard eighty area?
We approved the study.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Griggs that we approved the study. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Item number eight, is discussion and/or action on a contract with Thomson Hutton to perform a drainage study on the Westchester Drive area.
Again, the recent rains this summer, it was a lot wetter than normal, and it really exposed some problems. At the very top of the screen, you can see that is Springdale Park, and you can see the ball fields, those funny little round dots there are the ball fields. The white there is our water tank. The large forested area there, just below the water tank and the ball fields, is, it's all city property. On the very bottom left there, you can see a, like a detention area, a bar pit, we're not sure what it was, but it was holding water until recently. But in all the recent rains, that is overflowing and running down through the neighborhood. We need to figure out what is the way to stop that. We had the, the streets were flooded, we had to sandbag several homes in there, water running in them, trying to stop it. So we need to do a drainage study and determine the best way to stop that and stop that water from running. It runs down through Westchester neighborhood, down through the next neighborhood, around, and then crosses Brookwood. So we need to try to figure out how to stop that. And staff's recommendation is to approve Thomson Hutton to do a study there to let us know what the best course of action is.
Yeah, you've heard staff's recommendation. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Brown to approve the study. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Kelly, I think y'all are going to be doing a lot of study in here, very soon. Okay. Item number nine, is discussion and/or action on declaration of surplus.
We've got a lot at four twelve Vine Street. We've torn several houses down over there recently. We have an adjoining owner that would like to purchase one of those lots, and we, staff's asking council to please declare that lot surplus, and then it would be stopped, the legal requirements that we then sell it on the courthouse square by auction, which we would do. And if anybody's interested in it, if they could call, watch the paper, it'll be advertised just like the sheriff's sale, or you can contact the city attorney's office here, and he can let you know when he has it scheduled.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard staff's request to declare an item surplus. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we declared item surplus. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Robert, I'd like to thank you for having that with some very good visual aid tonight, and that helps, I think that goes a long way in helping us, helping everybody know exactly what we're looking at.
I believe that's the house we tore down there. That's, I think, Alan, correct me if not, but from there all the way down to the end of the block, we've cleared those houses now. Isn't that correct?
Thanks for taking care of the last two.
Okay. But that is going to be a nice lot now, vacant lot, but it'll be kept up with the house next door as part of their lot, so it's looking a lot better.
Did that person purchase that house next door? They already owned it, or how would they have that?
They already owned it, yeah.
Hey Brad, you're working on a song about planning for retirement, right?
Yeah.
I wrote you some lyrics.
You're writing now? Mm-hmm. Kind of seems like it might be about you.
Which part?
All of it.
It's about retirement planning. I don't see it, Brad.
That brings us to item number ten, which is citizens' comments, or any citizens that would like to address council tonight.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Commissioner Dregger, how you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you. I want to pass this out. You already have one. Don't hesitate. We're working on honoring World War I veterans. We set a date to have that program on Wednesday, September the twenty-sixth at ten a.m. in front of the courthouse. And this is due basically to the work that Buddy Adams has done and the DAR has done to get this done. And the list that I passed out to you are the family names of those persons that are going to be honored on that particular day. The plaque will not be laid at that day because we won't have the plaque until sometime in January, but we're going to put a reef so everybody will know where it's going to go and everything. We've done a lot of work, we've planned the program, and we've got the city on the program to be represented, and I hope you've got that worked out so that you'll know where you're going to be on that given date. So that'll work.
You're going to be there. Good deal.
Okay. And nothing is cheap.
Said Buddy and who else was the other one?
The DAR. The DAR. They have been working diligently to get this done, and it's not cheap. It costs money. So they've been working to get donations individually and from businesses, you know, that kind of thing to get it done. So they sent me to ask the city of Dublin for a contribution to help with this. So if y'all can, make a contribution, just bring it with you. Wednesday, we're going to have a little contribution pot there that you can drop it in to let us know.
That's why they asked me to do this.
And we want to have as many, as many people as can come out for this event because it's history-making, it's the first time, and it's very, very, very inspirational for Dublin that we're doing this, and we needed to do this. I've got some additional forms that there's some persons in, audience that would like to have one. I'll pass it out to you when I get through up here. I better wait on that right now, okay? I'll pass it out. If you have any extra ones, would it be possible to put this on the back door and the front door as an announcement to let it be known that this is going to happen because we're trying to get as many people as we can to come? Please do come in support.
We can do Facebook and all, too.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I tell you, I appreciate Mr. Smith going, or Councilman Smith going. Originally, when Buddy called me, he said that the date was on Thursday of next week, and I will be in Washington, DC on Wednesday and not going to be able to attend, but I, and I regret it because this is just like Julie says, this is history in the making, and I hope we can have a very good turnout from the city of Dublin, and we support the efforts of the DAR and Buddy wholeheartedly.
Ms. Dregger, do you know what the total cost of the monument's going to be?
Ask Buddy the day when we have the meeting if he could bring the total cost for it so that when we do have this meeting on Wednesday, he would tell, or someone would tell us what the total cost is at that particular time, so everybody will know how much the project really cost, okay?
Does he have any figure, roundabout figure?
He didn't give me one today, but he did say it was, he had about five thousand dollars thus far, but it wasn't enough.
And if, could we put on our Facebook page, if somebody wanted to donate personally, to contact Mr. Buddy Adams?
Mr. Buddy Adams. Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dregger.
One more thing, I'm sorry. On the list, you see a twenty-plus names on the list. Those are the persons that are going to be put on the plaque, and so we're asking the families in Dublin, Lawrence County, wherever, if one of those members, persons listed there is your family member, to please let us know so that we can recognize the family. Please let us know.
Ms. Julie, my, I want to ask this, because I was thinking that these other, most of these names were known, but they discovered some more. Is that right, or am I wrong on that?
No. There is, there was an initial list put out.
Right.
Okay. And on that initial list, they left those names off.
All of these names?
All of these names. They left them off.
I got you.
And so the plaque that was in the square up there had the other names, but not these.
These are going to be added.
These are going to be added to that plaque.
That's right.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Proud to be a part of the Dublin community. Laquita Inn and Suites is conveniently located on I-16 at four forty-one and close to many of our city's major industries and businesses. Laquita offers a prime location with many amenities, including free breakfast, free Wi-Fi, and a beautiful indoor pool. Laquita Inn and Suites was voted the best Laquita in the world and a TripAdvisor Certificate of Excellence. Book your next training class or school at Laquita Inn and Suites of Dublin, locally owned and operated. Wake up on the bright side. Wake up on the bright side.
Welcome to Pitts Toyota Downtown Dublin, where people go to buy great cars at great prices. We're a family-owned and operated full-service automobile dealership, serving middle Georgia since nineteen forty-seven.
It's our promise to provide you with an enjoyable, stress-free shopping experience. We have a full-service website that's fast, convenient, and easy to navigate.
We provide a balance between the big-city selection and the warm, familiar atmosphere of a hometown business.
Let's go places.
Any other citizens like to address council? If not, we'll go to council comments, and Mr. Jones, we'll start with you tonight.
Oh, boy, thank everyone for coming out, congratulate all the recipients for the many, many years of service with the city, and Mr. Richardson, for the, you worked with the city about as long as I was liv, been living, so, many years, and that's a, like I said, that shows a great, how great the city is to, we work, to work for, and how great the workers and loyalty, loyalty that we have here. And as an update, teen court helped this, um, um, training on this past Saturday, had all the high schools in Lawrence County represented, and, and teen court from Douglas, Georgia, came down and got training with them to start up their teen court, if you go on their Facebook page, they are excited, and they're getting volunteers, and they're up and running with theirs after they got the training, so that is great. Dublin High School did a voter registration drive, with the youth council did a voter registration drive at Dublin High School this past week, West Lawrence will be working on theirs next week, and the others, East Lawrence working on theirs soon, so as part of their project, and the community service project, and project with Secretary of State, so we're up and moving and doing a lot of things with our young people, and they're doing things, and we just, everyone be safe, and, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I too would like to echo what Mr. Jones has already said, and congratulate Mr. Willie Richardson on his service. City's gonna miss you, we thank you again for, for your forty-three years of service, that's a mighty, mighty large milestone, so congratulations. I also want to make mention of those that, that were mentioned for their years of service, the three with thirty years, and also Brian Evans with ten years, so congratulations, Ms. Aretha Brown. Also thank Mr. Kurts for his presentation, and also Mr. Drager for hers. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, I'd like to thank the people that was recognized for their service to the city of Dublin, also I'd like to thank Mr. Kurts and Deborah, we're looking forward to you serving the next ten years in this capacity, so that we can have grants for the next ten years. I'd like to thank all the city of Dublin employees, Lance and his staff for the work they're doing, and continue the good work.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Blake.
You got your name, you got your name up there, Blake.
Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everybody for coming. Mr. Richardson, congratulations, I hope you have a, a great retirement, I'm sure you will, and congratulations to all the other folks that received their service awards. Jeff, thanks for your presentation, I thought it was really, really good, and thank you everybody for coming.
Mr. Smith?
Last and least, I'll just reiterate what everybody said, Willie, every time your name is in vote, it's just a good thing, you have been a great, great employee in the city. Not just a great employee, just a great, a great friend. I want to thank everybody for coming, thank y'all all for helping to make Dublin, we're getting a lot of things done, Ms. Julie, just won't go away, and I'm glad, she's been such a, such a, just a matriarch for all of us, so thank you so much for that, that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine? Mr. Daniels?
I want to thank our grants department and their hard work, they're constantly working to generate new revenue, want to thank the fire chief for his hard work with the grants, does a great job with that. Also want to congratulate the recipients on their years of service awards, and thank you for all that you've done for the city.
And you're missing your sidekick over there tonight, he got a little puny on us, he, he's got a stomach virus or something, and he's not feeling real well, so we missed Josh, and hope he comes around good. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Just to follow up on that, I wanted to let everybody know, the fire department received a grant for a hundred and, almost a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and every penny of it is money that the city would have had to spend within the next couple of years, so it's replacing some air cylinders that they need when they go into, go into houses, and it's, all that stuff's kind of on its last leg, it wasn't achieved, it was time to, time to repair it, so, he, that's one thing he told me when he started, was he, we needed to get some more grants for the fire department, he was gonna start working on it, and I think he thanked everybody at the city when he was, he was telling us about it, but said, Ms. Deborah really helped him out, and, and we want to recognize the folks in Allentown have really been a big help with, with the grant, so I just want to let everybody know we've gotten that, thank y'all.
Mr. Richardson, congratulations, Ms. Richardson, condolences. I wish y'all the very best. Beings adjourned.